Welcome to tonight's meeting, first meeting of 2024. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Davis. Here. Vice Chair Milliken.
Here.
Treasurer Devardy.
Devardy here.
Secretary Hatcher.
Hatcher here.
Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee McKnight Morton.
Here.
Trustee Milstein.
Here.
Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
Remove.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For Tab A, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the minutes of the December 19, 2023 monthly meeting as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
Remove.
Support.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any discussion? Okay. There any verbal communications, Vanessa?
Oh. Excuse me, did I, there's a second one there? Oh, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes? Oh. How about you do that one? That's kind of the agenda.
I did.
Now the minutes.
Now the minutes.
Oh, WCC.
See? You didn't answer when I asked if there's any.
Oh, sorry. I was writing off.
I want to start the new year right.
I'm sorry.
WCCEA, Ms. Dr. Kissel, do you prefer Dr. Kissel? Ms. Kissel? I want to address you appropriately.
Or Julie, or Ms. Kissel.
Dr. Kissel.
Yes, generally, I just not keen on misses. I love my husband, but.
Not like that.
I'm my own person. Anyway. Ah, shocking, I know. Here we go. It is January 2024, and time marches on. So over this last week, the weather has certainly been part of our discussions. It is winter in Michigan, and rarely do we escape a winter where the weather doesn't impact our work. I did see that there's a pine tree down near the air handlers by the parking structure lot, but I was happy to see it fell just short of the unit. Last week, there were many spaces, classrooms, or buildings on campus that seemed to get colder as the days went on. We did appreciate, though, that the facility's employees were out moving snow and keeping the ice away from the buildings as much as possible. And happily, spring is less than two months away. So with the start of the winter term, the WCCA is looking to the 2024 school year. Each year, there are several letters of agreement that need to be renewed or reconsidered, and this is in progress. And yesterday's contract implementation meeting helped move us in that direction. The WCCEA has also been working on continued discipline concerns and are still planning to discuss a possible resolution to the current grievance and arbitration. Hiring will be a primary activity starting this winter as well. First, the VPI search is underway. Dr. Blanca, Chris Mahaly and I met with search firms on March 21st and picked a firm to help the college with this important position. Dr. Blanca and I also discussed options for getting the many stakeholders involved and defining the needs around the position. So also, with the many pending faculty retirements, seven of which I'm aware, now is the time to begin the hiring process. For years, hiring replacement faculty was delayed until after faculty officially retired, and this is simply not a good practice for the college as it doesn't allow for continuity of practice or adequate support within the departments. So at the last count, the WCCA full-time numbers were at around 187, which includes all the full-time bargaining unit members. With the current known retirements, this drops us to 180. Dr. Tucker is looking to, at about 10 to 14 hires needed, including those positions that are currently being covered by full-time temporary faculty. This would move the bargaining unit closer to the authorized strength of around 212. It's been many, many years since we've been over that 200 strong. So with such a need, getting the posting set, picking the review committees, clarifying the hiring versus interview committee processes are all very crucial. And so if the college reverts to the hiring long into the summer or waiting to fill the known open positions, it will most certainly impact our ability to serve the students and the college well. Dr. Tucker understands the importance of hiring, and we remain hopeful that the timeline he has been discussing with HR will be honored. Another issue that has been discussed since the start of in-service is related to developmental education. Now, for me, this is very personal as I've worked exclusively with students considered at risk for 27 years, 20 here at WCC. During in-service, Dr. Blanca and Dr. Tucker discussed the ongoing initiatives from the state that impact funding for some of the students who test below college level in reading, writing, or math. The topic generated a great deal of conversation among faculty, and as someone who has lived in this world for decades, I have genuine worry for the future. Developmental education over the last 20 years has changed significantly. In the early 2000s, community colleges were shifting the very open door to one that required prerequisites to be met. Gone were the days of right-to-fail. Since then, how to best structure developmental education and when to allow students to take college courses has been part of the ongoing conversation. With the introduction of multiple measures for placement, the use of GPA and guided placement, more students are taking college-level coursework in conjunction with or bypassing developmental reading, writing, or math courses. Much of this change has been positive, but these new practices have hurt some of the students. And most recently, through the MCCA, driving state initiatives, the talk has been to eliminate developmental education altogether. Within this institution, developmental education instructors have often been spoken to and of as trying to actively restrict the college-level access. This couldn't be farther from the truth. In many discussions across campus, people have asked if developmental courses are no longer available, how are students going to get the support they need? Or will WC simply bow to the outside forces for change that are merely the right-to-fail wrapped in the guise of equity? If the goal is simply enrollment, students, any student, no matter the abilities, can register for college-level courses. Some community colleges might be happy to take the money and time, but these students would get little in return. So without some sort of differentiated instruction or support for these students, these students will fail, spiral from course to course, or pass not because they've mastered the skills, but because they manage to stay all-term or find other supports, ethical or not, to make it through. Ultimately, WCC needs to be true to its mission to make a positive difference in people's lives through accessible and excellent educational programs and services. And we can do this through thoughtful changes to curriculum and supports that allow students to really learn the material. It's imperative that there are representatives from WCC making sure that those students' needs are not lost on politicians or outside forces with little understanding of what those students really need. So I have the second newsletter for you. Thank you.
Any questions?
These come out monthly, or what?
I'm still getting this sorted out. Just.
When's your last time here?
My last time here, maybe next month, but it may be March. We transition right into that. So I'm happy to answer any quick questions. There's more nuance there about some of the things of which Dr. Blanca is well aware. I think of everything that's in there. And I hear Brandon's off to Belgium. Yes, he's on a plane. He's going somewhere. He's not here, so he's been helpful in many things. So I appreciated the conversations with him. Questions for me?
All right. Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. There any public comments? Okay, seeing none. Vanessa, do we have any written communication?
There's none.
None, okay. Moving on to special reports, vendor diversity annual update, VP Barnes.
Good evening. I'm going to walk you through our vendor diversity efforts. First, I'm going to talk a little bit about why vendor diversity is important. I'm going to talk a little bit about the purchasing processes and procedures that we use, just for background. What are some of the ongoing initiatives that we've had? And what are some of the new initiatives that we have to increase vendor diversity? And then what are we actually spending? So first, pardon me. Why is vendor diversity important? Promotes inclusion. Importantly, it creates a virtuous cycle of economic growth and social progress that benefits Washtenaw County and our region. So it's very local-focused. Encourages job creation in our community. Promotes market competition, innovation, quality, and reduces costs. So anytime we can cast a wider net, that's a good thing. Diverse vendors bring unique perspectives, experiences, ideas to the table. So if any of you have ever worked on a team, usually you'll find if it's a diverse team, you get better ideas out of that team. It's the same goes for vendor diversity as well. Usually, we got a better product at a better price. Demonstrates socially conscious expenditures of public dollars. May positively, positively impact employee morale, satisfaction, and retention. You may not think this, but if people are proud of where they work and they're proud of what their institution is doing in these, in these types of areas, they're, they're more likely to want to stay. They like working for institutions like that. And it strengthens our reputation in the community. So a little background on purchasing at WCC. So where do we get our vendors? In many cases, they're recommended by the requisitor. They may say, hey, I'd like you to send this RFP to vendor A, B, and C. We'll check trade and commodity publications. We'll contact manufacturers looking for distributors in our area. Sometimes bidders come to us and say, hey, we'd just like to be put on your list. If you have something in my area, feel free to send me the RFP. We're part of consortiums such as My Deal and other purchasing consortiums. And we also participate in things like the Michigan Minority Business Development Council and the Small Business Association of Michigan. We always contact them, too, to see if they're minority-owned or woman-owned. We don't always get an answer. Oftentimes, they're afraid to answer because sometimes if they're, if they're a minority, they may think that it could count against them. And if they're not a minority, they think it could count against them. So sometimes they just don't want to, they just prefer not to say.
Trustee McKnight.
Nice question. I, I hear the variables between the two, which is nothing new. But is there a way to find that out?
Yeah.
Other than yes or no?
Yeah, we do, and especially if it's a larger vendor, we will make efforts to find out. So if they, if the company has a website, sometimes we can go on the website, and on their website, they'll identify if they're a woman-owned business. Sometimes they're a certified minority-owned business. There are certifications out there, so we can see it. Or we'll look on Google or something. But yeah, we can generally find out if it's a big enough organization. So we are generally, or we're always looking to provide the requisitor with exactly what they want at the lowest possible cost. But we're also looking for quality, delivery, service. We always give preference to any vendor that's in Washtenaw County and, of course, in the, in Michigan as a whole. So what is, what have we done to increase vendor diversity? Historically, we've partnered with several minority vendor organizations, and you'll see those listed here. And basically, out of these organizations, we get lists of vendors. But frankly, it's been a struggle for us to get a lot of bids. I can probably count, on one hand, how many bids we got this past year from these organizations as a result of working with these organizations. So we've got to do something differently, right? Pardon me. So we also do things, like if we do go out for an RFP, we always try to get one minority vendor. We'll call up one and say, we'd like you to bid. We always call a few because we want to try to make sure we get enough bids. And we try to make sure that one of those calls is to a minority vendor. So as I mentioned, we haven't gotten a lot of traction. So we started trying to do things differently about a year and a half ago. So in September, as a result of Executive Director Ben Hunhols, and I went to a McBoa conference, which is the Michigan Community College Business Officers Association. And JP Morgan Chase was there, and they gave a presentation on vendor diversity initiatives. And first, they asked which community colleges are, have vendor diversity programs. I think WCC and one other community college raised their hand. So I thought, well, right there, we're at least doing somewhat better. We, at least we're looking at it. But in the process of that, they mentioned Grand Valley State University and that Grand Valley State University has a fantastic vendor diversity program. So the purchasing director, Don Harris, and he got in contact with them. We started learning, well, what are they doing? And those are some of the things that we're starting to try to incorporate. And one of the biggest things, it sounds very simple, but it's outreach. It's actually developing a relationship with vendors and not just looking at a list and sending it out. Oh, here's the minorities on the list. It's developing that relationship and trying to figure out, well, which ones are actually interested in doing business with them, with us, and utilizing them on a regular basis. We've also done other things, and I'm going to show you on the next chart, our Amazon Prime account. So everybody can order things from Amazon Prime here at the college, usually just small things for office, office-related things and so forth. But you can, you can set something on Amazon so that it allows you to prioritize or prefer, rather, minority and women-owned businesses. And I'll show you the results of that on the next chart. But it's amazing what you can do when you just put them in the mix. We also, in September of last year, we streamlined our requirements for all purchases that are less than $20,000. So what we used to do is we required a lot of documentation and so forth. And small businesses, they don't have time or resources to fill out a lot of our documents. So we got rid of that bureaucratic red tape, and we just said, just send us a quote on your letterhead, and we try to make it easy for them. But this, this doesn't just benefit minority vendors. It benefits everyone. But if you can make it easier for everyone, we get a, we cast a wider net, and we get more minority vendors as a result. We've partnered with the Small Business Association of Michigan in December. They gave us their full minority vendor list, and we're right now busy going through that to see if we can try to start developing some of those relationships that I mentioned. And most recently, we've actually, in December, one of our purchasing agents, we have a purchasing agent that's a large part of her job now is going to be vendor diversity outreach and trying to get this off the ground more. We, like I said, we, we've, we've done some things. We've, some things have worked, some things haven't, but we, we're trying to give it a little more focus. So I mentioned Amazon. And again, all we had to do here was basically check a box within Amazon Prime that said, hey, our preferred vendors are minority and women-owned businesses. Now, this doesn't mean that our employees have to purchase from minority-owned businesses or women-owned businesses. All it does is put some of them at the top of the list. So if any of you ever, I'm sure most of you have shopped on Amazon. You probably don't scroll down that far. You'll look at the first page, maybe, first 10 things. And then at a certain point, you just make a decision, okay, I'll take this one. Because these aren't usually big purchases, right? So if, if minority and women-owned businesses are in the mix, people choose them. They don't, they're not looking to see if it is or it isn't. And you can see here, the red line basically shows you the trajectory of the spending since we made that change. We made that change in June of 2022, and, I'm sorry, June of 2021, and the purchases have gone up ever since. Overall, I'm going to focus on the green bar here. So over the last couple of years, fiscal year '21, fiscal year '22, we've had a tremendous amount of vendor purchases, largely because of all the renovations in the Morris Lawrence Building as well as the Great Lakes Regional Training Center. Since then, those projects have basically now concluded. You can see that fiscal year '23, it's largely back to where it was before. But we're expecting a lot of these initiatives to start gaining some traction. Again, we can, we're trying to cast as wide a net as possible so that we can continue to grow this. This is basically the same numbers, just shown in graphical form. The peak there with the renovations of the two large buildings on campus. The minority spending went up quite a bit. And this is what we're spending on. So this is, just to give you an idea of what are, what are, what are we buying for minority vendors? Building maintenance is the biggest one, but we're also spending on technology, on consulting, promotional items, temporary staffing, et cetera. So it's over a diverse sectors. It's not concentrated in one or two sectors. It's over a variety of sectors, so. That pretty much concludes my presentation. Are there any questions or comments?
Oh. Anyone have any questions? Go ahead.
One of your earlier slides talked about the reasons for doing this. And one that I don't think was on there, it builds morale among the staff, but it also is good for students. If they see people working here in those fields that look like them, it's encouraging, I think.
Yeah, that's a fair point.
Do you have McKnight Morton?
I remember years back, I think it was you, Linda, that would give report on the diversity in certain categories of vendors. Was it you that gave those reports? Anyway, I remember asking every time that report would come up, how many females, minority females? How many minorities? Are they union people? Because it's so important. We have a community, as we all know, of this diversity. So why can't we use those? So gradually, and I know I was told that it's difficult, but for me, as a layperson, I don't know where, where the difficulty lies. So, and I'm, I'm glad that you dwell in other spots and avenues that you're trying to do. I really appreciate hearing this report because it reaffirms to me that this institution is doing a lot for our community and the people who come here. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Good. We're trying.
One more thing, I'm sorry. I really applaud your insights into relationship building. I think that pays off in the long term, this short term, and for the community. I think it's a very healthy approach to finding people and developing. But relationship is, it's crucial, and I'm glad you're doing that.
Yep, good.
Last, I wanted to say, if no one else, did you want to say something? Okay. Yes, kudos, major. But my question is, because you've mentioned that obviously we want to be in the county trying to find women, minority-owned businesses within the county. And a lot of times, depending on what it is that that need is, you're not able to find that, that type of business. So do you ever go outside of the county? Or you just award it to the, to the next business, which happens to not be a woman or minority-owned business?
No, we'll go outside the county. The, we'll give preference to Washtenaw County. If, if everything is the same from, from the bid, we would go with a Washtenaw County vendor if there is one. So we don't, we don't restrict ourselves to Washtenaw County.
That was the only question I had. If there's nothing more, then, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. That was very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Next, we have diversity and inclusion annual update with Dean Reed.
All right. Good evening, trustees. It is a pleasure to present our diversity and inclusion update for 2023-24. And in today's report, we'll cover our board policy on diversity again, and then we'll look at some of our initiatives over this past year and highlight a few activities forthcoming. So looking at Policy 8028, Policy on Access Success Equity for Diverse People. WCC promotes the awareness and appreciation of cultural differences and commonalities among students, community, and staff groups seeking to build community, unity, and learning. Furthermore, WCC promotes a climate of access, success, and equity for persons from different racial, ethnic, and cultural groups, age levels, religions, sexes, gender identities, and expressions, sexual orientations, physical capacities, learning abilities, and income levels. This just affirms our work that we do. We're not only doing it because it's a national trend, but we actually have it in our policy beyond federal regulations and policies. So we have a commitment to diversity. Let's start off with access. And with access, our goal is to embed the institution in community outreach initiatives to ensure equitable student access. And by doing that, we consistently engage in.
That was my way of interrupting.
Oh.
Just so that you can stand up straight. Don't you, stand up your microphone. There you go. There you go. I know you're a tall man.
Okay. That might work better. I'll, I'll just lean over.
Yeah, that's fine. There you go. That's better.
So we consistently engage ourselves in the local community, specifically 48198, 48197, and constant outreach at YCS and IPSE Community Schools and Lincoln Consolidated School District. And you'll see that our enrollment for both of those districts hasn't, has increased, has increased this past year. And, and we're also going out to community events. So this is in partnership with our Workforce Community Development Division and Recruitment and Outreach Team. And, and again, we have completely fulfilled our high school honor scholarships. That is the Presidential and Procasini to where each public high school in Washtenaw County gets six full-ride scholarships. So this is a significant increase in comparison to several years ago for IPSE Community Schools. So this is what outreach looks like, a snippet of it to the left. That is a workshop, a writing workshop we did at IPSE Community High School to where some of our faculty from the Writing Department came and, and helped students compose their essays, gave us some tips and strategies. So we're not only just about increasing the number of applications, but we want to make sure they're quality applications as well. In the middle, you'll see our engagement in a mentoring project at IPSE Community Schools where there was a session for boys and a session for the female students as well. So that was a great day last year, last spring. And then throughout the summer, we're consistently at various community events, not only to, you know, be there as a presence for WCC, but also outwardly show our commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion with the initiatives that we are presenting at the, at the events. Oops, sorry. So in an upcoming slide, I'm going to show our enrollment. But one thing that I, I want to highlight is we've had an increase in our Latinx community. And from doing, from, since we've seen that, we have hosted events, welcome events. And this one on the flyer to the, to the right, you'll see it says, benavita a la comunidad. And that flyer is in completely Spanish because we want to speak to and tailor it to the needs of the Latinx population. So students were able to invite their families to this event. So this was posted at restaurants around the community and at the schools and local businesses so we can bring families and community members to campus. And since doing that, we also started the Latinx Student Resource Committee. And this is several, this committee of several Latinx staff and faculty on campus. So we know that some students might be English lang, English language learners or bilingual. So, you know, they can reach out to this email if they have any questions or issues navigating, and these, these individuals will promptly respond and help them navigate the college system. So we're also intentional on repairing, rebuilding relationships with the Native and Indigenous community. And I said rebuild because this is an educational system thing that our nation has undergone with the history of broken, of stolen land, broken treaties, and boarding schools to where there's a certain level of distrust between some Indigenous and Native individuals to where we still, we have to continually have these conversations. So last November, we had a, a session here on campus to where we had several individuals from the local Native groups come. These are educators. To the right, you'll see Elder Warren Potowski. He is very accessible in the region, and he also teaches at U of L. He's an author and a poet. But he shared some of the stories from his ancestors about the discrimination in the educational system and then the under-representation of, and the misrepresentation of Native Indigenous people in, in text. So, so we can have those conversations. So we can not only just recruit, but understand the issues and then be able to serve the needs of the community. So that's a relationship-building in progress. So let's look at how all of this work shows up in our data. So before we kind of analyze everything, in the, the blue bars, that's 2021 enrollment, so fall 2021, and the orange is 2022, and then the gray is 2023. So to summarize this, this graph, you'll notice that our, our population is becoming more and more diverse. We have the greatest increases in our Asian student population and in our Hispanic student population. So all that work is, is leading to this diversity of our enrollment. So once we get students here, we, it is our responsibility to equip the students. So once we get students here, it is our responsibility to equip the students with the tools they need to be successful and resources, and we engage them in certain activities on campus. And the first thing we do is our Student Success Conference. And this is at the beginning of both the fall and the winter semester. This past fall, we quickly switched it to virtual because power was out in the area. So we end up having the same impactful session virtually. And then the winter semester, we were able to have the Student Success Conference in person. And this is, Student Success is geared towards our incoming students. And we are equipping them with the tools such as learning comments, tutoring, student development activities to learn about student clubs, our success coaches, our counseling center, and then even our Office of Diversity. The biggest thing is they get to meet peers that are like-minded and have the same goal of success as them at these sessions. The Recharge Workshop is similar, but it's for returning students just to recharge their motivation, recharge their energy for another semester. So some students might be going into their second term. Some students might be coming back after a few years. Maybe they got the reconnect scholarship and want to come back. So we provide a refresher of some of those tools, a motivational keynote speech, but also introduce them to some other resources that they might need along the way as far as career readiness and entrepreneurship center. So we also had our Second Annual First Generation College Celebration. But before I, you know, go into detail about the celebration, a first generation college student is a student where neither parent or guardian obtained a four-year degree. And here at Washtenaw Community College, seventeen percent of our students identify as first generation college students. So this past November 8th, for First Gen Day, we had a panel of current staff and faculty who are first gen, shared their experiences, offered tips and advice. But also, in that picture, on the other side, at the tables, there are more staff and faculty there that identified, that sat with students, mentored them, exchanged contact information so they can keep that long-lasting relationship. This is important because oftentimes, first generation students might not have those in-house role models and examples to give them that in-school knowledge of how to navigate the system. So having that support here on campus is important. And so we're going to keep pushing forward to support our first gen students. We're also building more community and providing that same level of type of mentorship for African-American male students, pushing them along toward student success. And this past spring, we took about fifteen students to the African-American male Student Success Conference at Henry Ford College. And we were grateful that a community member volunteered to take us down on his bus down to that conference from here to Dearborn. And like I said, we had fifteen students that come. So we're still engaging with those students. They're already asking me about the next conference. And so we just want to wrap them with support so they can be successful. So those initiatives, plus our management of our scholarship cohorts, meaning we're welcoming them, we're engaging with their families, connecting them with advisors and coaches, our coordination between advisors and coaches, Alpha Scholars, HBCU Pathway, those are just some of the initiatives that lead to us having another successful year in graduation rates to where we're at a twenty-eight percent now. Now, at this chart, it took a couple of things I want to point out. It says fall 2019 on the last line. So that's when the cohort started, but in 2022, that's when they finished. Graduation rates are usually based on three years at a community college. And secondly, this is only based on our first time, full-time, degree-seeking students. And here at Washtenaw Community College, most of our students are part-time. So seventy-four percent are part-time. So this graph represents about seven hundred students each year for that graduation rate. So we're doing, we're making good progress, but we're still pushing forward to increase that graduation rate. This is how we compare to our peers. So that same twenty-eight percent that you've seen on the previous slide, these are some of our community colleges around the state. And you'll see that we're at least five percent ahead of other colleges in the state.
Good enough.
So breaking graduation, was that a question? Breaking graduation rates down by race and ethnicity, once again, in the blue column, that's the twenty-seventeen, I mean, the blue bar, that's twenty-seventeen cohort. Orange is eighteen, gray is nineteen, and St. Florence is nineteen. They graduated in 2022, and so forth, and so on for the other. But to summarize this chart, you'll see that our African-American students and our Hispanic students have experienced significant increases in graduation rates. In particular, our Hispanic students from a few years ago, it's pretty much tripled from eleven to thirty-three percent. So putting both slides together, the enrollment slide, that was a few slides ago, we're becoming more diverse. And then also, our students of color are more successful. They're graduating at higher rates, too, when you look at that.
Yep.
Trustee, Devarti?
Is, are these percentages based on full-time students like the previous slide?
These are first-time, full-time, degree-seeking students.
So these don't include the part-time students?
Nope. First time, full-time.
Trustee Hatcher?
Well, I'm sitting here trying to figure out what more you could do. I can't think of a thing. You're doing just a marvelous job in every aspect of this issue. And the results are clear. So congratulations and keep it up.
Yeah, I noticed it in the-
Thank you.
-graduation ceremony last year, beginning with the honor roll ceremony, the amount of diverse students that were coming, crossing the stage at that ceremony. And then, when the general ceremony was the following week, I think that's the following week, to see the rest of the graduating body, it was remarkable. Because I mentioned it to other people that had wondered how the graduation had turned out. And I was extremely pleased to see not just the females, but the males, too. Because a lot of times, you know, the males don't really jump on board, especially our black men. And, you know, we've talked about this for a long time, and this is my second term on the board. So I have a little bit of say. Because I know when I got on the board, there wasn't hardly any black males that were really coming in, having retention, to graduate, the whole nine. And then coming, going through the years of shaking the hand, seeing who's coming and going through, coming off the stage, getting their degrees and such, and seeing this, just like Trustee Hatcher said, and all of us are probably thinking, too, I don't know what it is that you're doing, but you're doing a fabulous job.
Thank you.
Mary, I-
Yes. Trustee?
No, please.
With respect to first generation students, historically, what have those enrollments been? How are they trending?
We do have that data. It's not presently with me right now.
Is it growing, or is it decreasing? Do we know that?
It's increasing. Yep.
Good news. Thank you.
I would like to give a drum roll for the next part of his report.
Oh, that was Ian.
Okay. My apology for interrupting.
So looking at gender disaggregating, same colored bars. Female students post-COVID, there's been a surge. The male student population, we're still rebounding. But what we're seeing in research and national trends is that we have, some males are leaving college to go straight into the workforce, or even deciding to go straight into the workforce before going to college. So, but we're still rebounding in that area. So equity, we're promoting the advancement of academic programs and services that ensure equity for identified student groups. So that's tying in some of our success and access initiatives, but looking at each identity group to see what is needed. Recapping our HBCU Day, which I did present last summer, and we had a really nice video. We have four hundred students in attendance from around the county. Most of those students were ninth through eleventh grade. It was right in this building. And we had, you know, all of our school partners, they came up and did presentations, and students learned about transferring to their schools, marching band, a step show, and then, you know, students got to eat, and did tours around campus, too, all of the different divisions that we had. And then we had a very good response from community volunteers. So mark your calendars, May 3rd, 2024, this year is our HBCU Day coming up.
Excuse me. Just a question. When did this program start? Last year?
Yeah, last year was the first one.
So what about the ones who were in eleventh grade? So this is their twelfth year.
They're in their senior year.
So after that, that's when we'll be able to see some residuals of what-
Absolutely.
-had happened. Did they go into the HBCU, or they went elsewhere?
Right, right. So during that day, all of the students filled out a contact interest form. So we're able to follow up with them and reengage them. Hey, have you still remember about Washtenaw Community College? With the, to remind you, HBCU Pathway, students get guaranteed admission and in-state tuition to our partners that are on the slide. They get guaranteed admission and in-state tuition. So we're encouraging them, come here, start, do the two years, and then transfer. And our newest partner is Central State University.
On May 3rd, is it?
Yep, May 3rd.
Want us to have a step show?
Yes, we'll have a step show again.
I'll be there.
Okay.
So what time is this event? I'm marking it in my calendar.
From ten to three P.M.
Someone was going to ask you, and I forgot. Trustee Devarti?
Is there a HBCU in Michigan or Ohio?
So Ohio, Central State University is in Ohio, where before is three hours away.
So that's the closest-
The closest one.
-HBCU. And are there, there's not a single one in Michigan?
There was, Detroit just had one that just got re-accredited just two years ago, the Lewis College of Business. And we've been in discussion with them to see if we can work out an agreement, too.
Is that a four-year business university, business college?
That is, it's a four-year, and most of their programs are business.
Thank you very much. Oh, somebody?
Oh, yeah. So-
I want to hear everything. I feel like I'm in a commercial.
So, yeah, Central State is our newest one, and we should have at least one more by the end of next month. So more exciting news. We've talked before about the schools coming up here, which we have HBCU Day, but we've also talked about at the board in the past about us going to visit. So we are doing a college tour in March and bringing our current students and our local high school students. And this was funded through the Community Priority Fund, which we've received over a year ago, which supports college readiness within 48198, 48197. So that is a great opportunity. And we're consistently engaging our current students in monthly workshops and study groups. We have thirty-six new students this year. And since 2021, one hundred and forty-eight students have transferred to a HBCU. And many of them went to Central State, which now we are partnered with them. So. So our goal is to diversify the representation in all programs across the campus. But we want to specifically focus on high demand, high wage, career pathways, too, and that is CTE. And our focus is on any program that is within a CT that has lower than twenty-five percent of a particular gender. And for instance, manufacturing, manufacturing, technology, and welding has less than twenty-five percent women in that field. So we want to encourage, when we talk about the gender equity pay gap, we want to encourage more women in the community and on our campus to go into those fields. And then we also do outreach throughout the rest of the month. In February is our CTE month to where we'll have workshops. We'll have our Family and Community Day at Park Ridge Community Center to talk more about some of these pathways. Advanced IPSE is also a promoter of CTE pathways with the three mobility, IT, and manufacturing. And the Center for Career Success also does workshops to promote CT as well. So inclusion is engaging our institutional stakeholders in activities designed to promote inclusion of all students. So building a sense of belonging is important. It supports student success. And reflecting on some national research of other colleges across the nation, where Qualtrics surveyed twenty-seven hundred students across the country, and about a third of them said they feel, at some point, they feel some form of discrimination, whether it was race, religion, sexual orientation. But at the same time, those students said that when institutions do show a commitment to diversity, equity, inclusion, they do feel valued as well. So it's important for us to continue to do professional development and programming to foster a sense of belonging for our students here on campus. For both fall and winter in-service, which is right before the semester starts, we have in-service sessions specifically on DEI-related subjects. And all full-time faculty do have two hours, two required hours for DEI, diversity, equity, inclusion, that they need to get each year. And we've invited Dr. Cheryl Kelly back again this winter semester because in the fall semester, it was standing room capacity only. And that day, we talked about minority mental health. This semester is implicit bias. We covered pronouns one-on-one. So we're just doing all of this just to make sure that our whole body of staff and faculty are at least trying to foster a greater sense of belonging for all of our students from various identity groups. Each month, there's a different theme. There's a different cultural heritage month. September is Latinx Heritage Month, October, Queer History Month, November, Native American Heritage Month, and January, we focus on MLK, and February, Black History Month, March, Women's History Month, and April, Asian American Pacific Islander Month. And we always have a film screening on a various, on a historical or current day issue or topic relating to that identity group, just to provide more awareness and then appreciate some of the successes and the resilience of individuals within that community. So staff and faculty can get PD credit, CalPRAD credit, and we invite our students to those as well. Last summer, we had our Second Annual June Team Celebration, and it was a very hot summer day, June nineteenth. We had a picnic-style lunch, and we had our very own instructors, Thornton Perkins and Harry Kovak-Moore, as our speakers. And we also had an alum bring his band, and they provided live music for us during that day. Just a few weeks ago, we had our annual MLK celebration. And this year, our focus is economic justice. Dr. King's 1968 Sunday, his last Sunday sermon in Washington, D.C., he said, "If a man doesn't have a job or an income, he has neither life nor liberty, nor the possibility for the pursuit of happiness. He merely exists." Much of our work at the college, when we talk about advanced IPSE or diversifying the CT programs, high wage, high demand, HBCU Pathway, so forth, we're trying to provide social mobility for populations that might be economically disadvantaged, or just anyone in general. So we're about not only making sure people get the credentials so they can get a job and survive, but we want them to thrive as well. So we're living out Dr. King's dream in our work here at the college. At the end of the program, we announced our Equity in Action Award winners. And our community award recipient was Sheriff Jerry Clayton of Washtenaw County. He wasn't able to be there due to the weather and the roads that day. But Kathy Wyatt from the Sheriff's Office, who's done a lot of work with recidivism and returning citizens, she was there to accept this award. Mayor Malalyn, out of our English and Writing Department, an instructor, has done an immense amount of work supporting our Outspace and our LGBTQ+ students on campus. And the STEM Scholars Program pictured is Susan Dentel and Lexi McCracken. And Amy Carpenter was not able to make it that day. They've done a great job with our STEM Scholars. And their nomination said, "Since 2018, eighty-two STEM scholars have transferred to a four-year institution, and more than half of whom are economically disadvantaged, first-generation college students and/or members of underrepresented groups." So I mentioned Mary and her support of our gender and sexuality initiatives. Outspace is our student club for students a part of the lesbian, gay, trans, lesbian, gay, bisexual, trans community. And all of the students in this community, they have, they meet weekly, they have virtual meetings. Even during the pandemic, they still met weekly. And this past fall, they went to Lexington, Kentucky for a Midwest conference as well. We also had our first return of the Michigan- We also um, had our first, uh, first return of the Michigan Community College Gender and Sexuality Conference in person. We had the first in-person since the pandemic um, last uh, spring. And we had fifty-one students in attendance um, during that day. And um, that, that increase in attendance was um, a part of a partnership between U of M, Schoolcraft, Bay to Knack, and Eastern Michigan, where they brought their students here to our campus as well. And on a day-to-day basis, we're continually um, encouraging and, and, and making staff aware of students' chosen name and um, you, the use of proper pronouns as well. So thank you and um, thank you for your time today.
That's over.
The, the pronouns, I'm, I'm from the old school, you know, and I totally give much respect, you know, for a person who want to um, be identified as such other than just their given name that their mom and dad gave them, but it's difficult. So um, in the, in the classroom setting with Dr. Sky, uh, I'm sorry, uh, Cheryl Kelly, um, did she go over like, uh, you know, how, how do you, how to get over that, that hump? How to transition? Because, you know, I, I have some friends and know of friends that want to be addressed as she, hers, hers, and they's, and them, you know? No, like I said, no disrespect. It's so new to me. And I, I feel, I, I feel lost. So I just said, "Hey, how you doing?" You know, because I don't want to offend. So um, how, how did, how did she go over that? Because I would love to sit into some, into something like that, just to get some, some instruction.
Yeah, so we had a, a pronouns one-on-one workshop uh, that was led by um, Eli um, Eli Chavez from U of M Spectrum Center. And U of M has the most longstanding um, LGBTQ resource center in the country. So they came over, did a, 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 a workshop for us. And it wasn't just a chalk and talk. It was very interactive. There were exercises to where you had to fill in, um, the, in the storyline, had to fill in their proper pronouns, matching um, the English vocabulary, the he, him, he, him, his, she, her, hers, and so forth and so on. They um, with the, with the person's name that was listed in there. So it was very interactive and uh, we're gonna keep doing those workshops even more, so.
Recorded?
That was not recorded. Yep.
I'm, I'm just thinking, these in-service training uh, workshops are for staff and faculty here at the college. Would we as trustees be able to come to those if we were aware of the schedule? I'm not sure if we're allowed to go to those and participate. But that would be an opportunity. If we saw something like pronouns one-on-one and we wanted personally to work on it, would we be allowed to go or would that be too intrusive?
I, you're allowed to go. We can talk about the right, you know.
I, I wouldn't wanna go and make staff people feel uncomfortable.
Want to go intimidate.
Right, exactly.
Right.
That's how I even feel, so. But you know what? We can, you know, I was thinking about this. I should, I would like to ask you, what do you wanna learn? You know, what would you like us to do for, for you? Um, so there may be times when we can be engaged. I'm not saying we shouldn't, but there, there are things that, this is a primary example. There are other things that aren't related to this, like artificial intelligence or there are a lot of things going on right now that the board might be interested in. And we could use some good time um, doing some professional development. So let's talk about that. I'd love to hear your thoughts on how you'd like us to address it. But absolutely.
What else? Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Great job.
Hey now, we're moving on to tab B. Tab B is the recommendation that the Board of Trustees approve the personnel recommendations as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Trustee Hatcher?
Um, I have a couple of questions. There's so many part-timers here. Um, were, were you able, Vanessa, to get the answer to my question about full-time and part-time?
Yeah, the human computer knows. Linda?
Do you know how many full-time professional instructors we have and how many part-time?
I have uh, full-time teaching faculty is one fifty-four. Part-time? That junk one-on-two and then part-time four ninety-six.
Four ninety-six? Okay, thank you. That was one of my questions related to this. There's a professional librarian on page one who's cl, in classified faculty rather than professional faculty? If they're a professional librarian, we only have two professional librarians in the, in the bargaining unit? But I don't understand why a professional librarian is listed as classified. But H R people are all six, so I can't answer that question.
They are, but I'll get that answer back to you.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's just, yeah.
So they're, because.
Okay.
Because classified are paid on an hourly basis. Being paid as a professional librarian, but they're paying.
That makes sense. That makes sense. And um, I'm noticing on page two, there are four full-time people leaving. And no new people and no um, replacements listed. So we're saving a lot of money on page two, which is good for the next um, issue. But it's not good that we're losing all these full-time people with all this experience. Those are my comments.
Anyone else? Okay.
Action.
It is an action.
Yes.
I turned the page and saw.
Is a voice vote to accept us?
Sorry to be moved to seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to tab C, the financial reports. V P Barnes, if you could enlighten us on a few things?
Okay, I'll just make uh, three points and then if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer. Uh, first, I wanted to take a look at the winter tuition, since we're in the winter semester now. And as of the end of December, a large part of the student population had enrolled. We, at that point in time, when we closed the month of December, our headcount was up by three point two percent versus the prior year. And the credit hours were up by one point one percent versus the prior year. So if you'll recall, we would have budgeted or we did budget to be down by three percent because we generally take a conservative approach in our revenues because we don't wanna overspend. But I would like to commend the enrollment management team. I think it's, it's, they've done a very good job. We were barely negative in the fall and they've turned it around. The winter is, is exceeding our expectations, even as we sit here today. Um, in mid-January, I think we're up credit hours by about one point seven percent. So it's gotten a little better still. Uh, so that turns into good financial results, as you can see here.
Could you speak more into the microphone? So it'll be um, on our recorded version.
And a moment, President Belac would like to.
May I just, um, well, the members that are here, that are part of the enrollment management team, could you just raise your hand so everyone knows who they're speaking at?
Jerry.
Carrie. And I believe that Pete Luskovich leads it.
Yes.
And he is hitting it out of the park.
Is he now?
As a leader, so um, I just want, I'd like to acknowledge that, even though he's not here tonight. But thank you, Terry, for bringing that up.
So you can see here, in the winter, the winter tuition, we're exceeding uh, the budget by almost four hundred thousand dollars as of the end of December. So that should, that is continuing into January. In line with that, revenues, similar to last month, we're um, ahead of schedule. I'd also like to look a, at expenditures. We're ahead by about two point seven million. I would say one point one million of that, uh, I expect to be retimed into the second half of the year. In other words, they're gonna spend it later. One point six million of that approximately, I'm expecting to be permanent savings, whether it's through vacancies or other things that we're pretty confident that we're not going to spend. And the last thing I wanted to highlight is down here toward the bottom, uh, probably it's almost since I've been here, this number has been negative. Uh, it's, it's not something that we actually translates into cash for the college, but this is called an unrealized gain or loss on investment. So when interest rates are rising, which it has been for some time, this is always a loss because the value of our bonds decrease as the interest rates increase. Well, now the reverse is happening. Interest rates are coming down a bit. So you can see here now that we have an unrealized gain. So again, this doesn't, we don't ever sell our bonds. Uh, we keep them to maturity, so we never realize the loss or gain. But it's just an interesting metric to see that the interest rates are starting to come down. So in, in all, we're getting a good rate of return on the bonds that we have purchased, especially over the last uh, several months, yeah.
It's good news, I guess.
Uh, that's, that's all I wanted to touch on. Are there any questions yet?
Trustee Hatcher?
Under Advanced Technologies and Public Service Careers, um, is that under, uh, over budget representing a trip to Belgium?
No.
Oh.
No, no. Uh, the biggest driver there is we did an extra police academy that we weren't expecting. So you, you'll see extra revenue in excess of that. So it did cause more expenditures than we were expecting, but it also has more revenue that's offsetting that, yes.
Good to know.
But also related to V P Tucker. So he did, he's doing a great job there.
I, I move we accept the uh, financial reports for December twenty twenty-three. General Fund, Capital Fund, Combined Schedule of Investments.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
President Belac, would you like to uh, say a little bit?
Oh, yes, I would. I'm sorry. Yes, we now have the facilities report and that will be given by uh, A V P Craig Whipstock. And when he's up here, I just wanna mention something. Craig, I just, on behalf of the board and myself, um, wanna congratulate you for completing the CLAP program. He's uh, received the Certified Lighting Efficiency Professional. He is now a Certified Lighting Efficiency Professional from the Association of Energy Engineers. And it, this program is designed to provide recognition for professionals who have distinguished themselves as leaders in the field of lighting efficiency. The designation CLAP identifies individuals who have demonstrated high levels of experience, competence, proficiency, and ethical fitness, bringing their, to, to their professional activities the full scope of knowledge requisite to the development and implementation of effective lighting efficiency solutions within the commercial, industrial, institutional, and governmental market sectors. So congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. So good evening. Uh, presenting to you the Facilities Development Report. One of the projects that I'd like to talk about is about lighting and it's a project that has been on here for quite a while. It, it's a big endeavor for us to convert all of our L E D, or all of our lighting to L E D. Uh, this past uh, winter recess, we really ramped up on it uh, because areas that were normally not accessible to us became accessible. Classrooms, labs, and, and so on and so forth. During the holiday break, uh, we ended up doing eight labs and classrooms that were completed. Uh, with those upgrades, our average energy savings per classroom was in excess of fifty percent. We reduced the actual energy consumption by fifty percent and also increasing the lighting quality in these areas. Uh, one of the biggest uh, um, areas that we did was the automotive body shop and the automotive area. Uh, we took out ninety-three fluorescent fixtures, which were um, actually six bulb fixtures, and replaced them with eighty-one L E D fixtures, uh, reducing uh, the energy by fifty percent in that area. But also, we got more compliments in that area because of the lighting quality dramatically improved in that area. Uh, this is the auto body area as well, too. As you can see, these, these fixtures are a lot smaller than what we had before. The other ones were a four-foot by, most four-foot by four-foot that we took out. And these are a two-by-three fixture that we put in. One of the other areas that we did, we did a lot of lighting in the Student Center Building. Uh, we were able to upgrade all the lighting in the uh, Java Spot, which really, to me, um, improved the look of that area. To me, it's more welcoming, inviting, it's brighter uh, in that area. Uh, the Student Center Cafe area, we were able to complete that entire area, both uh, the front serving area and the entire kitchen in the back. One of the other areas was the Student Center Building, where the student work areas, the existing, the former lights were a uh, halogen type of light that was constantly on. We took those out, we put L E D, which also has individual controls. That way, if they don't want them on, or if they want them on, they can turn them on individually instead of either being all, all on or all off. Bookstore, uh, same way, we uh, were able to get the uh, lighting done in there, almost complete. We still have to do some of the shelving areas, but that area as well looks a whole lot brighter um, in that area. Uh, this one was a big one, was the shipping and receiving building. Um, we took out fifty-seven fluorescent fixtures, which were three and four bulb fixtures, and replaced them with twenty-eight L E D fixtures. And it yielded over seventy percent energy savings in that area alone. Any questions?
What do we dispose of the one, the hundreds of fluorescent tubes that we've taken out of service?
We uh, actually pack them up and Becky, Recycling Team, um, ships them out. That's one of the good things with the L E D project. Once we get this done and we eliminate that, that's a whole waste stream that we will not have anymore. So we won't have the fluorescent uh, light tubes or the C F Ls. Uh, I don't know if most of you know that the Biden administration increased or brought up the phase-out of the fluorescent bulbs that was supposed to start this year. They started it last year. So fluorescent bulb production and/or imports will cease in mid-two thousand twenty-five, if I take it. So we have to do this.
Glad to know that we're with the program. That's good news.
Yes.
Seventy percent? Man, that's incredible.
Yes.
So when were the, when were the lights um, switched out? And how quickly were you able to see that change in uh, wattage percentage?
Well.
Or energy for um, efficiency?
Like the warehouse, it took our guys, uh, we had three electricians and it took them really two days to do it. I mean, they were really quick. I mean, over the house. I mean, over the holiday shutdown, we, we were able to convert 370 light fixtures with our electricians and a few from Huron Valley. So as soon as we got those changed over, the ladies in the warehouse immediately saw it and loved it. I mean, if you go through there now, it's really bright. They can see the products on the shelves and everything.
Trustee Hatchet?
You were headaches.
Yeah, that's something that I learned when I went through that training, that they actually had a neurologist that talked about converting from fluorescent to LED has reduced eye strain and fatigue. And they're actually seeing that in case studies.
And migraines.
And migraines, yep.
Just, I don't know if you have a sense, and I'm not looking for an exact number. Do you have a sense how much money annually this project will save us in terms of energy savings?
I don't have that number. Bill Greis would have it. He's been tracking a lot of it. We did talk about, you know, what we did save last year. Our goal is to reduce energy consumption by 2%. So in order for us to meet that, especially with lighting, we have to change out 125 fixtures per month in order to meet that goal. Sounds easy, but when, once you're getting into the classrooms and try to scheduling that, it is not as easy as it, it sounds. But we're getting a little bit more aggressive. I don't know if aggressive is the word I wanted to use, but we're working like in, in the finance area. We go in every Friday now. They'll move, you know, out of an area, we'll go and change those lights and move. So we're, we're working with staff and faculty to accomplish this task.
So you say the goal is a 2% reduction? And is that all types of energy or is that just electricity?
Just electricity at this point, yes.
And that, and electricity also includes HVAC?
Yeah.
And all those sorts of things, which is a high use. I know we're looking at replacing HVAC in the Student Center down the road. Is, I'm assuming that we're going to see a significant improvement in efficiency there with new HVAC?
Oh, yes. Yep, yes, we will. Yep.
Thank you.
I just have one question. Madam Chair. Just humor me, but under Campus Repair Maintenance, project, excuse me, number one, is Harry Street move. You installed two additional classroom tables. Is this $86,000 for more than two tables?
That one, I can't tell you at all. That one I don't know, but I could find out.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, okay. I'm like, whoo, that's some expensive tables. And I think I have one more thing about the bathroom. Oh, shoot. I missed it here. I just, I'm, I know you're renovating bathrooms, right?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Please don't forget the bathroom and the.
Downstairs.
Downstairs.
We got that on the list. Any other questions?
No, we're good. Thank you so much. Appreciate your, appreciate your report. It was very thorough. We move on to remarks from the Board of Trustees. Yes, Trustee Fleming?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to say a couple of things first. President Blanca, thank you very much for the work it took to get the Voice back up and running and to Provost Blakey, and I think Pete probably had something to do with it, too. Thank you very much for that. I noticed it. I saw the first couple of papers that came out and I was so happy to see that Lily came back to us. She's really great. She's a great, talented editor and journalist. I say all that with a heavy heart, too, because this week we learned that one of the biggest newspapers of our country, the LA Times, is laying off about a quarter of their journalists. And they have traditionally been like a really great paper, like the Wall Street Journal or, I'm sorry, the Washington Post and some other papers.
They've been acquired and that's the reason new management is making those cuts, right?
It hurts because I'm really deeply saddened and concerned about the state of journalism in our country. You know, there was a time that I can remember that there was always an Ann Arbor news person in our meetings. But for a few years, that hasn't been the case. And just like all other local reporting, it's just, it's just gone to the wayside. And that's why I think it's just really, really important that our students see that we have that paper and that we have a journalism program where we are training students to be good investigative reporters and be critical thinkers. Our journalism program is a good critical thinking program, you know? And so I just, I have such a heavy heart when I learn of all these other things. And we've got journalism, journalists who are dying in the world, too. They're dying in war zones and, you know, just all this strife going on. And, and then the little glimmer, the little bright spot is our paper is back. And I want to thank you very much because it really is deeply important. Thank you.
Newspaper of the whole city.
Yeah, you never know. You know, when I worked at The Voice, we often heard from the community that our paper was one of the best local Washoe County papers because they learned about the school, they learned about what was going on in the local area and, and even what was happening with board meetings, you know? So it is an important little paper and I'm very proud of it. Thank you.
Trustee Hatchet? Was it Bill? Trustee Milliken?
Two weeks ago, we had the Redding Scholarship Luncheon here at the college. And Stephen and Agnes Redding were recognized for the million dollar scholarship that they've just accorded the nursing program. Sherry Lambert had her moment in the sun presiding over that luncheon. There were 18 or 20 students that were awardees. Got a chance to share what this meant to them, both in person at their luncheon tables and in videos that were presented that gave clips from each of them, some very moving stories. Second only to the scholarship luncheon that we do annually at the college. It was exciting to be a part of it and to see a tangible recognition to the Reddings for what they're doing for us and our nursing program.
I'd like to second what Dr. Kissel mentioned about developmental education. It's close to my heart because I taught it for a long time as well. And I understand the state's reluctance to support it because it's expensive. And it's expensive for scholarships for students who need time to catch up. So I'm sympathetic to that side of it, but I'm also concerned about where do students go who can't, their reading isn't college level, their math isn't college level, their writing isn't college level, they're not illiterate. So sort of Washoe literacy might not be the appropriate place. But until recently, Washoe Community College was one of the few places where students could go to catch up. And I think it's important that we keep that niche. Eastern doesn't do it anymore. U of M certainly doesn't do it. And I think it's important, we work with the high schools to try to get them, students really at college level when they finish high school, but that hasn't happened. And so there are a lot of students getting left out of this, this student success mode because we aren't teaching developmental ed. And we, we've, I know it's been massaged and changed and so forth, but we have to, it seems to me at least, we have to fund that and keep that going for, for the community.
Was that always provided here way back when?
Yeah, it always was, yeah. And it's, it's difficult because it takes time to catch up and that uses up scholarship money. So the state doesn't like funding it. But I think we need to talk some more about how to fund it and how to keep it going because it's important for the community, I think, to have more people who, maybe they don't want to go to college, but at least they're college ready. At least they can read the newspaper if it comes out, make some critical choices. So I think it's important to keep developmental ed in some form. I'd also like to suggest somehow at board meetings, it seems to be one of the big things that's happening on campus aside from remodeling bathrooms, which is very important, is this, this transfer to Canvas. And it's causing a great deal of angst and concern. And I would appreciate just a brief how you doing report at board meetings about how it's going. And it could be from interim Vice President Tucker or it could be from Illusian or there's so many people involved in this and how they're working together. And just a very brief, this is where we are, this is where our next step, because it's going to be really crucial in the fall.
Both of your comments make sense. Thank you.
So I'm listening to that. I thought we were doing these developmental courses for students that weren't college ready.
We are, but the state doesn't want us to anymore. That's what Dr. Kissel was saying.
But that's our call whether we want to keep doing it, right?
Yeah, I, that's, that's my pitch.
We should, if you don't mind, we should probably have, you know, time where we talk about developmental education. There are a lot of, there's a lot of research and a lot of studies on the various types and ways of delivering developmental. There, you know, I think we should just talk about it. Everyone believes in it. I don't think there's anyone here who doesn't believe in it. It's, we should just talk about it and.
Would that be an appropriate thing? I don't know if we have a retreat or something coming up.
Yeah.
But as a topic of where we are.
Yeah.
As a college, with that, what we're doing and what we see as the landscape.
Something from MCCAs as well. It's not, believe me, our faculty are amazing. So it's not to say that what we're doing is not right. But as you know, right now, there are only two community colleges in the state that offer developmental education the way we do. And that is McComb and us. The other community, actually Lansing Community College has a board, has, actually has a board policy preventing developmental education to be taught in a certain way, not against it, but, you know, in a different ways. So there's, you know, I think we should talk about it. And no one's wrong here, by the way. This isn't about who's wrong. It's not about who's right. There are a lot of, maybe we have a cafeteria model. I'm making it up, okay? I'm, I'm just throwing this out there of developmental ed. Maybe, you know, maybe that's what we do. But in engaging the faculty is important and I know that we have. I know those conversations are still going on and they're very important. So. There's a, we should just look at everything.
Happy New Year. I know I'm kind of late, but Happy New Year to everybody. I'm glad that we all had a happy holiday. I'm going to keep it like that. And we were safe and we were with our family and our friends and we're back on campus to begin another fantastic year. And I pray moving forward that we continue to be a team and continue to, you know, give each other constructive criticisms, give a hand up and not a hand to the side, you know, like I don't want to be bothered. You know, we, in order to continue to rise, we have to do it together. And that goes for the board, too. I mean, we have an excellent team here. They're sitting here at the board today. And I really do appreciate all of you, staff, faculty, and the board trustees here because the school wouldn't be where it is today with all the awards and aculation, accolades that Dr. Blanca has worked so tirelessly and everyone else, too, to make sure that we remain on the map and increase the student enrollment. And that has a lot to do with why Dr. Dean Reed's report was the way it was. Because of all the hard work that we're all doing out in the public to get our name out, our ads on billboards. Thank you.
During the game, during the Michigan game.
Yeah. So, you know, every little bit helps. You know, you never know who's watching and that's for real. You never know who's watching and always be on your A-game. And so we will continue to see what else is going to happen this year, but I know coming down the pike, it'll be more great things. So thank you.
President Blanca?
Yes, I'd like to piggyback on what Madam Chair said. We do have an excellent staff and we, the faculty and the administrators are always in front of us. And so we can recognize them more often. But what we just heard from Craig Whipstock and the work that goes behind, you know, behind the scenes, like the lighting fixtures that we don't even notice and the fact that they have to change them and how long it takes and the fact that today they were out there making sure that our sidewalks were safe and our parking lot was safe. There's just, and our buildings are clean. There's just so much, just so much. And so I want to, I agree with everything you're saying. It's a great college, it's a great team and it's all of us. So thank, thank you to all of you. And we'd agree at Martin Luther King Celebration, like Eric, Dean Reed, you're doing a great job. He's hitting it out of the park. He's very committed, as you can see, his passion. And Martin Luther King Celebration was outstanding. I'd like to thank Trustee Milstein and Trustee Milliken for attending. It was a very, it was a great event. Also, you heard about, oh, you talked about the Equity and Action Awards. Our Student Welcome Day has also, was last week. That was also very, very successful. I'd like to thank the Student Life Team and Clarence or Vice President Jennings, the people who work under your leadership. Great job. Thank you. Please thank your team for all of us. And, oh my gosh, that art gallery is, did you do that? Really? Who, do you want to talk about it? Do you mind, did you see the, did you see the art gallery?
Yeah, we, I looked at it.
Could you come up to the microphone?
Can't hear you, my dear.
This is Dean Ann Nichols.
That is the K-12 art show?
Oh, really?
So that is the work of local students. And of course, it's great for them to come on our campus to see their work. And we anticipate a lot of students and parents coming by to see that. We have a part-time gallery coordinator named Jennifer Licars, who is responsible for coordinating that as well as all of the things that we display in that space.
I just want to let people know it's four counties that are students from four different counties that are represented in there and that on February 23rd, there'll be a reception at the gallery, which I intend to attend from 5:00 to 7:00 PM Friday, February 23rd.
Thank you so much for sharing those details. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And thank you trustees for your leadership and all of your comments. I appreciate all of them. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, oh, it's not me.
Oh, it's me, okay. All right, so we're on to old business, the action item. The next one up is TAB E. Recommendation is that the board of trustees approve a contract with Critical Response Group to complete the critical incident maps using collaborative response graphics of the entire Washtenaw Community College campus. The contract will provide for the update and maintenance of the campus CRGs for the next six years. The cost of the contract will not exceed $222,600 and is being funded through an appropriation from the state of Michigan. Do I hear a motion?
I move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Aaron Nunn. Vanessa, do you please call the roll?
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer Devardy?
Devardy, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Trustee Millschain?
Yes.
Hey, TAB F is the Computerized Maintenance Management System Recommendation. Before we vote on the contract with AssetWorks VP Burns, oh, you're already at the podium. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I have a presentation here on behalf of VP Beschi, who's out of town this week. But back in October, trustee Devardy asked a question about this when it was under new business that wasn't quite answered or wasn't answered completely in that meeting. We wanted to walk through to make sure that the board has a thorough understanding of why AssetWorks was selected. So, once we got the RFP, well, first, what was the objective? We wanted a system that was cloud-based and we wanted a system that's user-friendly. Those are two key criteria. And the user-friendliness is particularly important. It sounds pretty basic, but we have a system now that was developed in 2005. It's not very user-friendly. It's not very intuitive. And therefore, not everybody on the facilities team uses it and they don't utilize it. So it's not a good value for the college to have software that isn't widely used. So it's very important to us to have something that was user-friendly so that, so that people would feel comfortable using it. So we did get seven companies that responded to our RFP. The evaluation committee looked at the top three and they asked those top three vendors to come, or to give us a demo. So we invited AssetWorks, TMA, and Z-Links to give us a demo and evaluated that demo. And again, AssetWorks came out on top after that demo. And I'm going to go over with you on the next slide, some of the key, what stood out to the team? Why did they think that AssetWorks was much better? So here are some things that stood out. But in particular, there were three things. The interactive calendar, the mobile friendliness, and the customizable templates. So the calendar really helps with scheduling the technicians when they're out in the field. It's a very helpful tool for the facilities management team. The mobile friendliness, the technicians can actually have their iPad or iPhone or device of any kind out in the field and they're able to use that to order parts, to see the maintenance history of this particular item and so forth. So that's, it's a very great tool to have and it makes the workers much more efficient in doing their work. And we can customize templates. So this system is a cloud-based system or service, software as a service. Oftentimes, they're not as customizable, if you will, when you use software as a service. But this has quite a bit of customization that you can do while still using a cloud-based system. So it made it very user, very friendly for us to create our own forms and so forth. What is our negotiation process? From a purchasing standpoint, you could see on some of the previous slides, we, because we're a team of people trying to evaluate a particular good or service or software, we use a scale. It's usually a scale of one to 10. And each person on the evaluation committee assigns a number based on what their impression of a particular software, in this case. And they evaluate the merits and they usually, price is not among those. We don't, price we use as a qualifying factor. And the reason we do that is because if we, if we were to put in price as a weighted metric, for example, you could conceivably end up with a, with a software that was very, very cheap but doesn't meet the needs of the college and it would have the highest score. So we try to avoid those situations. We want to say, well, what's the best? What, not necessarily, what meets our needs in the best way? And then we go and negotiate that price. If we can negotiate something that's a good value for that, for the college, we go with it. If we cannot come to an agreement and it is not a good value despite the fact that it was checking all the boxes, if you will, we will go to vendor number two. But in this case, we thought that it was a great value proposition for the college. We also checked the references. AssetWorks, of course, provided references. We reached out to two of them. They both gave glowing recommendations of the product. Some of them had actually used the others in the past and had moved to AssetWorks. And AssetWorks also is the leading software, the leading CMMS software provider to higher ed. Some of the quotes from the committee, just, just wanted to give you an idea because it's very important, again, for it to be intuitive. That was exactly one of the quotes. Intuitive, good visual dashboards, easy to learn and use. Again, we want the technicians to use it. If it's easy to learn and they'll use it, that's, that's great. And I just wanted to remind you exactly what is this system as I'm walking you through how we came to the decision. But just as a reminder, it actually comes with three parts. They call it Ready, Aim, Go. But it's really, the ready part here is if you're a user, if you're a faculty member, a staff member, you can, you have an issue, you can submit that work order right in, right on your phone or at your computer, at your desk. And you'll know what's the status of it. You know, maybe the water cooler in my office isn't working. I haven't heard. I can look on there and see, well, what's the status? Is this, is this next in the queue or so forth? Aim is kind of the brains of the system. This helps us with things like inventory planning. If we need parts that are coming up for a particular service that needs to be done on an HVAC, for example, it can help us have those parts there just in time so they're not sitting there for a year waiting. They can be there right before we need them. Things such as that. And if we utilize this system well, it'll limit system downtime. If it limits system downtime, HVAC systems, other building automation systems, if it limits the downtime, it pays for itself over time, right? And there's also a go app. This is, again, talking about the technicians in the field. They can go and they can enter notes. They can order parts right there on their, on their iPad and so forth. They can see the history, the maintenance history of a particular machine that they're working on, et cetera. So it's a, it's really an all-encompassing software. So in summary, comprehensive system, easy to use, reports that are easy to generate, detailed preventative maintenance that can prolong the life of our assets, robust data structure that helps with technician productivity, work order management, which is the basics of the system, the work order management, work scheduling, and dynamic charts and graphs so that we can be responsive quickly to the campus needs. So, yes.
With this contract, how much training time, either virtual or onsite, comes from AssetWorks?
It's several days. I mean, the implementation time itself is estimated at over 500 hours. And after that, there'll be, it doesn't take as long as you think. I think it's only two to three days because it is so intuitive that it doesn't take a tremendous amount of time. I think the ones who'll need more training are the ones who are operating the brains of the outfit. But they'll, they'll be involved throughout the process and they'll be learning along the way.
Does the implementation costs include transferring data from Famous into AssetWorks? Is that part of the cost?
All of it's included, yes.
And will there be any loss of data between the two systems going from one to the other?
To my knowledge, no. To my knowledge, there's no data loss. They're going to have forms that we have to fill out to make sure that all the data that's going to have to be transferred is entered. So my understanding is no, we should not lose any material data.
Thank you.
Trustee Devardy?
I just want to, I had the opportunity to review this and look at it and just wanted to speak strongly in favor of the, first of all, the process. And I think you didn't adequately tell us how, what a broad array of members of the team that'll be using this or affected by this were part of the whole process of evaluation. And I think that's really important.
Yes.
And another feature of this is the ability to schedule things out and do a timetable scheduling so you can actually order things that you need before you need it. And there's a whole process to, to bring things in so that they're ready when you need it to, when you're doing these facility. So there are really aspects of this software that are tremendous features. And it replaces a system that we're not using because it's obsolete. So I think the efficiencies that'll be brought to our team weigh heavily for us to support this. It's an investment in making our facilities team more efficient. And I'm totally in favor of it.
Well, yeah, thanks for reinforcing that. I neglected to mention that this isn't just the leadership. They're choosing the software. People from across the facilities organization, they were involved in making this election themselves.
But I'll make the motion if people are ready for it.
Trustee Hatcher?
This won't eliminate any positions, will it?
No.
I move that the board of trustees approve a three-year contract with AssetWorks LLC in the amount not to exceed $294,180 for this computerized maintenance management system.
Support.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer Devardy?
Devardy, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Trustee Millschain?
Yes.
Hey, we're moving on to TAB G, a discussion item. This is in reference to Merit Network Contract, CIO Turner.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I started at the end of October and this is my first opportunity to speak with you and I appreciate that. So we're going to talk about two contracts. First, the Merit Network Contract. Merit is the internet service provider for Washtenaw and primarily for the main campus. And it provides all the personnel, faculty, staff, students, administrators, access to the world wide web. That's its main function. We have used Merit for many years as our ISP through several, through our contract and several renewals. This renewal is for three years and it increases our bandwidth almost by twice for actually less cost. And I'll explain that in a second. The current capacity is 2.5 gigabytes per second. That's how fast it throws away, throws around our data. And it will be increased to about four gigabytes per second. And the change in cost will go from $47,000 approximately down to $43,000. Why the decrease and the increase is that the ISP industry has become much more efficient and the technology has become much more advanced so that they can provide increased capacity at a much lower cost. So this renewal, I'm going to explain the date issue here, was due 11/1/2003, the day after I started. We had a staff member leave. I reached out, I know personally the CIO from Merit. He put me in contact with our account manager, who was on an extended medical leave at the time. So it was the first of the year before I could get a hold of him, get things worked out. And so here we are in January before you, asking for you to consider this contract renewal. Any questions?
Don't need the internet, do we?
Yes, sir.
Is this kind of a thing, so we're already using Merit?
Correct.
Is this kind of, if we approve the contract, it's just flipping the switch and our, the price we pay goes down and our capacity goes up?
Yes, sir.
Just as soon as we approve it, that happens?
Yes, it's a software change.
So the sooner we do it, the more money we save and the greater our capacity becomes?
That is correct.
I would say that we should do this as soon as possible. And I know on a lot of these discussion items, we're review them one month and vote on them the next month. But with the, if the board would agree, I would move that we bring this to a vote tonight.
Merit would appreciate that very much.
Trustee Hatcher, did you have something?
I just have one question and that is, if it's for three years, don't things change quickly?
Uh, yeah.
Are we, are we, will they automatically change within this contract or in three years will we have to make up the difference or what?
No, if anything, pricing in the industry could continue to go down. What I will predict is our capacity needs will go up.
Yeah.
So, so we have some headroom here. We just started hitting the 2.5 gigabit limit here within the last few months. So we're almost doubling that. So we've got some headroom that should get us through three years.
Okay, thanks. Any motion?
So Merit is very well-known in this space. So my question has to do, not, I'm not opposed to this at all, but just in regards to, do we shop for something like this? Are there other vendors that we could talk to? Is this, you know, do we, do we know that we're getting the best possible price for something like this?
In fact, yes, there are other vendors. But this has been already shopped. It's a state, I think it's called MI Deal. So it is a buying consortium. So we are guaranteed, guaranteed industry best prices.
All right, perfect.
Thank you. You bet.
Larry, is this something we have to vote to move it to a vote?
Yes, vote to move this to an action item.
To an action item. So I would move that we move this to an action item to be voted on tonight.
Support.
Second. Oh, you did?
Is that a voice vote or is?
Rock, roll.
Okay.
Rock, roll.
Call the roll.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer Devardy?
Devardy, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Trustee Millschain?
Yes.
Now I move that we approve the three-year contract extension or change, a new contract with Merit Network for a three-year contract for internet connectivity and DDoS. I'm not sure exactly what that is.
Distributed NIOF service.
Oh, okay. For an amount not to exceed $130,500.
Support.
So please call the roll.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer Devardy?
Devardy, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Trustee Millschain?
Yes.
Thank you. Congratulations.
So CIO Turner, the Adobe Software Enterprise License Contract Renewal, this is also something that needs to be renewed too?
That's correct. So we've been using the Adobe software, which includes very familiar names like Acrobat, Photoshop, Illustrator, Premiere Pro, InDesign, just to name a few of the products that they provide. They've been used by the campus since the early '90s in support of our educational programs from the media, digital media. from the media, digital media arts programs, graphic design, digital video production, technical writing, webpages, our business office systems classes, as well as support of all of our business offices use it. Our website group uses it. So it's a very pervasive tool. So the price increase that they've offered us is fairly substantial. It really comes in two parts, and I'll explain the two, the two pieces. So early, before the pandemic, most signature approvers were, were pen and paper. They call them wet signatures. When we went to remote work, a product like Adobe Sign, which is very similar to DocuSign, was used so that you could use digital signatures, and they were legally binding. So Adobe, in its kindness to education, provided Adobe Sign at that time for free. And the, and so after the pandemic, now, they are now deciding to charge all of their customers for the use of this product. The, the pricing is on a per transaction or per document basis. And what they typically do will sign, will, they will sell you an upfront consignment of number of documents. Our license is for 5,000 to start. And so that is based on some projections on what we've used for the last few years. If we go over that, then they start charging us on a per transaction basis. So that 5,000 will cost us annually $6,900, which is a three-year total of, I think I have it here, 27,000? Anyway, and then, so that's almost half the increase. The rest of the software, all the ones that I were talking about, Adobe, Photoshop, or Acrobat, Photoshop, et cetera, were increased by 15%. In the software industry, enterprise software like this, typically an annual increase is between 5 and 20%. Because we are using an enterprise license contract, it locks in the pricing for three years, which will be to our advantage because Adobe pricing does nothing but go up. So that represents the other part of the increase for a total increase from 2019, 659 to 27,000, or 270,614, which is an increase of 20, 27%. So, yes, sir.
A layman understand that Adobe used to sell licenses, and now we're pricing on a transaction basis? Or license is gone? Or what's the lay of the land there?
Good question. The transaction pricing is only for Adobe Sign. The other, all the other software is on a, they do a couple of different kinds of licenses. One is a named license, which means that license is assigned to an individual. So faculty and staff get those kinds of licenses. And then there is a unit price that covers all of our labs. So all of those are a license to a device or a person, and that is the part that is going up by 15%. So the transaction price is only Adobe Sign, and everything else is what they refer to as a subscription price. You bet.
So our students are able to access all of the Adobe products in our computer labs.
Correct.
Now that we have so many classes that are being taught online, some of our students are not able to be on campus or don't have to be on campus. Some, we're hearing, you know, we have students from out of state as well. So what are those students doing? So it looks like there's a discounted rate that they're able to get these products for.
Correct.
Have we looked at providing that as free of charge during the time that they're in class?
Yes.
Because we are seeing so many students who are not near, near the campus?
So the online students, we've taken and done an analysis, and it's about 770 students. And at the current pricing, that would add another $110,000 annually to the, these prices. So historically, the, the faculty have managed the online students to either encourage them to buy the software themselves, or they can come on campus and use the in-lab computers to do their work. And that seems to be satisfying the constituency. But yes, we could pony up because Adobe is very, very strong. There, you're gonna, for those online students, if they're using them on a personal device, they have to have a named license.
Thank you.
You bet.
So does this need to be renewed right away? Because I know trustee DeBarty probably will, will ask, so I figure I ask.
So, so this one is, is a renewal in March. So we're, we're right in the right
Okay, great.
Cadence with this one.
Any further discussion, trustee DeBarty?
I'm thinking about the question that trustee Millschain raised with our off-campus student studying online, which I, I see increased demand for that. Is there, have we, are there any other ways to do this without just buying? I mean, that's a lot of expense for these students.
Yeah, and that's what makes it so prohibitive. And believe me, every, every CIO I know has tried to, you know, negotiate with Adobe, you know, any kind of tactic they can use. And Adobe is, dominates this market by orders of magnitude. And they're, they've gone to the, rather than buying a perpetual license, now they're all subscription. And you can't get around it. There's nothing that I've seen that allows that.
Thank you. I, you know what? Oops. I think this is something that we could look at this month. I, I'm, you know, I'm, look, Terry's looking at me, and all these people are looking at me. So, I mean, but we could look at it this month. I, I'm not sure what our recommendation would be, but we could come back and give some options, you know what I mean, and come to you. It's a good question that you raised, and since you vote on it next month, I could, we could bring that back to you. Does that sound good?
May I, may I add just a couple points, Madam Chair?
I was gonna say something too.
Okay. I went through the graphics program, and I used the software. The student license is ridiculously cheap if you have to get it. It's like 20 bucks for the month. It's ridiculously cheap if they have to get it. And when I took my class to use it on my personal computer, I was able to get an Adobe Free Trial Edition first, so I didn't have to pay anything or plug in a credit card. And that free trial lasted the time I needed in that semester. But if I needed it, it was also ridiculously cheap for a student license if I needed it. You just gotta be able to use your WCC email address with Adobe to prove that you're a student, and it's like 20 bucks or something. I can't remember if that, if that's still the case, but it was pretty cheap.
But if
Yeah, well, I used, I was also going to say that as well when I took Illustrator course here a couple of years ago, online. And I had to purchase the Adobe package. And it was, it was cheap. Well, I don't like to use that word, cheap, because this could be expensive for another student. But if I remember correctly, a student rate, proving that I was a student because I had to use the campus email address, I had a whole year for like $29.99 or something like that. But it didn't just limit me to the Adobe. As you know, it's got all these other gazillion platforms that you could use it for. But that discounted price was just awesome because my, my class only lasted just that spring semester. And I was able to use it on my own free time throughout the remaining 12, 12 calendar months. So I would like to think that they do have some sort of setup for, for students online.
I just finished my doctoral program.
Okay.
And I did license the student version of Adobe Creative Cloud, which is everything.
Oh, well, thank you.
And it was 250 bucks.
Oh.
A year.
Yeah.
So would you like me to still come back with some ideas?
It's, there's a pretty big difference between $29.99 for a student and $250.
So if they licensed a single product, it could be very different. So it would be, it potentially could be different for every class. So we can, we can do some analysis on what the requirements are for individual classes and what it might cost a student for each one of these main online classes, and give you a more accurate representation on what we're talking about.
That works. Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet.
Nothing more? Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Jeff.
Thank you.
Good job. F P Barnes, contract extension with Power Wellness for Management of Health and Fitness Center.
Yeah, I wanted to walk you through our, our contract with Power Wellness is coming to its expiration at the end of February. And I wanted to walk you through some of the things that they've helped us with, so I understand why we would like to renew with them. So they've been with the college and operating the wellness center since 2007. They did a very nice job during the pandemic. Prior to the pandemic, we had reached basically the capacity of the fitness center at around 7,000 members. When the pandemic hit, the membership number cratered to about just over 2,000 members. They, they have since, they worked very hard to make sure the place was safe, so the people would come back to the center. And they've worked with a company called Buxton to grow the membership. And now they've grown it back up to around 5,700 members. So it's not quite back up at 7,000 yet, but they've been on a very good trajectory. They're expected to have positive operating income this year. They had positive income last year, and they broke even the previous year. So I think it was, it was not a, we were lucky, we only lost money, I think, for one year related to the pandemic, save the bond payment. The bond payment was on top of that. The, the, how do we measure them? One of the, one of the ways we measure them, an important metric, is something called the net promoter score. This is basically takes how many people are actively, would actively recommend the fitness center to their friends and family versus the, or less the detractors. Who, who are the people that really kind of bad mouth, if you will, the fitness center? And we have always gotten excellent or very good ratings with Power Wellness. So that is some, an independent metric that tells us that they're, that they're doing a very good job. It's not to say there's not room for improvement. We still get a complaint from time to time. We would, they would, some, a member might want to see this done better or that done better. But as a whole, we see that, we see the fitness center is doing very well. They've done some innovative things as well. They have created two apps, which, which is something that helps, I think, retain membership. They have virtual classes. If you, if you're, for whatever reason, you're traveling or something, and you can't get to the fitness center, there are free apps that Power Wellness as an organization does, that you can still do your training online. They have two apps, one's called Move, one's called Volt. They have slightly different applications, but it helps people that can't get to the fitness center for whatever reason. Also, if you've been over there, they have a machine, the name escapes me, but it, you, you put this device on your bicep, and have you done that?
Yes, I did that.
It, it's pretty amazing. It, it gives you a ton of metrics, including your body fat percentage is a basic one, but it can tell you your metabolism and how much you're metabolizing. It's a very, very nice, and that's also free to members. And I think is a good retention initiative. They also, and you're gonna see a detailed presentation next month. We've invited, I, I, along with Don, will give you a detailed presentation next month before this is up for approval. But they do partner with a lot of organizations, a lot of community organizations they partner with. They also partner with the college. They're on campus every single month with the students and have grown student membership as well. So again, this, this is up for renewal. We're proposing that that the contract be renewed for five years. Actually, it's about five years and four months because we're just trying to align it with the end of our fiscal year. Rather than it end in February, we'd rather it end in June aligned with our, with our fiscal year with the option of renewing, assuming things are still going well at the end of that term for another five years. Are there?
You're forecasting with 5,700 members, an NOI of $750,000. Do we know pre-COVID with 7,700 members, what kind of an NOI we had then?
Yeah. We had, in fiscal year 19, for example, we had net operating income of $1.8 million. And that paid for our $1.2 million bond payment, plus deferred maintenance that was on the building.
So is this $750,000 likely to continue to grow?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I think the 750,000 is slightly conservative. In fact, it would have been better. We had actually given them a, a target of a million dollars, even though we put 750,000 in our budget. But the air conditioner had a catastrophic failure in August. If, for, for those of you that were, are members of the fitness center, it had a catastrophic failure, and the center was very hot for a couple of weeks. So we, we allowed, we gave the members an option of, of a bridge, an additional bridge, and so they could not pay their membership fee for that month. So that hit our revenues pretty hard for the month. But it was the right thing to do.
As their staff increased, because I know for, like, taking classes and such, it was pretty limited because they didn't have enough staff to cover, you know, certain time slots of the days or, or the week.
Yeah, there, they did have some trouble recruiting for a while. But they've increased the pay a little bit, and the job market improved over time. But yes, they have filled up some of those slots because I know they were struggling to get Pilates instructors and some others. But yes, they've since done a much better job. In fact, our revenues, our auxiliary revenues, which are things like personal training and other classes, have gone up.
Okay, that's good. Trustee Millschain?
So question in regards to Power Wellness. Do they have a strategic plan for the center over the next five years of what their, what the future for the center is going to look like? Do they provide us anything that sort of says, here's our, here's, in the perfect world, here's where we're gonna get you in the next five years?
We usually look about three years out. And that, like I mentioned, they, they do, they have their own expertise, but they also work with another company called Buxton to ensure that they're continuing to grow the membership. But if, but what you're asking me about a complete vision of where the, with where the center is going to be in five years, I would say the answer to that right now is no. But certainly something that we can make sure happens.
So I, I think it's something that's really important, at least at this point, now that the center is hitting that 20-year, in, in this contract, it's gonna hit a 20-year mark at this point. My concern lies is that, you know, during my tour of the facilities there, it's starting to look a little dated compared to the competition that's in the market. And I know there is large box gyms that are actively trying to get into the Ann Arbor market, and they're just trying to find enough land to do so.
Right.
My concern would be if one of those ended up being in the vicinity, you know, let's just say within a mile, mile and a half radius, that could really affect us greatly here. So I would like to see that there is some plan in place. I understand it's an expense that we, as the college, will have to undertake. But I think it's something really important for our investment in this, in this facility that they guide us in what we need to do in order to make sure that still able to not only maintain membership, but to grow membership. Because if another center should open somewhere near here, it could be catastrophic to us. So I would like to see something from them that says, here's what we're going to do over the next however many years in order to make sure that we continue to be the premium gym in the area.
Right. Yeah, I, I agree with that. And I think you're, you hit the nail on the head. The college has to be aligned. Because ultimately, the college, it is in Power Wellness. It has to pay for all of the investments. It's the college. I mean, they can readily tell us exactly what they would love to see done. And I know Don could tell us that tomorrow. But we just have to be judicious in where do we want to place our money, which I, I'm not denying that that's not a good place for it. But just, we have to look at all of our investments and decide, is that where we want to spend it? But, but you're right. But, but you're right.
And I, and further with that, you know, I think it's, that building is a little bit out of our expertise on a day-to-day basis with regards to, you know, swimming pools, and, you know, that building's a little bit different than the rest of the buildings where, you know, we have classrooms. So I, I think we should rely on much more to get that expertise, so that we don't, we're not surprised with expenses, or we're not surprised with a drop in membership all of a sudden, because people are going to realize, maybe this isn't the facility that I want to work out, and I want something that's newer, that has better amenities.
Yeah, and I would comment that we are, we are in the process, we're trying to hire someone that has the kind of experience, that has pool maintenance experience and that sort of thing, to help the facilities team really keep that place where it needs to be.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Trustee Devarti?
Thank you.
A simple question. When is the construction debt on the building going to be retired?
I'm, I'm sorry?
The debt, when will we retire the debt?
It's 2027, right? Yeah, 2027.
So another three to four years.
Right.
Moving on to our last tab, Tab J is an action item. Washtenaw Technical Middle College Board of Director Appointment. That the WCC Board of Trustees approved the appointment of Mudassar, I'm going to murder his name, and I
Mudassar.
Thank you. Mudassar Talawakal? To the Washtenaw Technical Middle, Middle College Board of Directors with a term ending April 2026. Background information can be found on the following page. Any discussion?
Okay. In terms of reading the next page, it seems like he's going to keep UTMC out of jail, so it's good.
That is good. That is good. Vanessa? There's nothing more?
Situation students.
Okay, Vanessa?
I, I move to approve.
Support. I beat you. Vanessa, please call DeWolff.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer Devarti?
Devarti, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
Trustee Millschain?
Yes.
I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn the monthly meeting.
So moved.
Court. Call of favor.
Aye.